All the way to six three, stand. The pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America. To the people of our country, the nation of the God. In this moment. Roll call please. President.
President.
Here.
Here. Allison Behrger.
Present. Alright, first item on the agenda is the mayoral reports. Tonight, we have some guests in the crowd and I will say. I think Antioch is the cheerleading capital of Illinois. If not, the United States, because I've had a lot of cheerleaders here with the boards. So get those. Keep it going with those groups, but again, congratulations. I have some information about the team here on February third and fourth. The Antioch Community High School RAPD Cheerleaders competed at the IHSA State Finals. And had two days of deduction, three routines, landing another IHSA podium finish taking third place in the medium varsity division. The program has been on an unprecedented run in the IHSA State Series over the past six years. Under the direction of coaches Amber and Tim Babin, Caitlin O'Grady and Jada Pope. In the past six years, secrets have four IHSA State Final third place finishes. And the Antioch Community High School's only team sport state champion in 2020. This year's team also made history for the first time in the program record. The team completed the trifecta of first place in the Northern Lake County Conference Championship. First place in the IHSA State Series Sectionals. And then IHSA State podium finish to earn a state trophy at the state finals. The only team in the state of Illinois in the medium varsity to win their conference title, sectional title, and earn a state finals trophy. So congratulations and all the cheerleaders are here. Stand up, you have to come up here to the podium to be recognized. So everyone stand up that's here, alright, they come up front. Alright, there's a trophy. I remember you, you're in the pageant. Alright, so I also, also. You have to do at least one cheer while you're here. It's a requirement, so you take your pictures and think about which one you want to do. Thanks, thanks Paul. Alright, so. Make your pictures. Alright, they have to do, okay, so we're the coaches too, so raise your hands if you're a coach. Alright, yeah, alright, so. One cheer before you go. Thanks for coming, I appreciate it.
You know, sure, yeah, hold on. Your honor, hold on, we have a. Coach Babin and then trustee Pierce, yes.
I can just mind real quick.
Yeah, good.
I heard the mayor say you have, the parents had to take you guys out for dinner for winning. I thought it should be the other way around, you should take your parents out for all their hard work now.
I just wanted, I think you had a chance to speak last year and in years past, we've, we've had an opportunity to say something and I wanted to just real quick and say again that. You know, on behalf of myself, my wife, who's the boss of this program, so. And all of our athletes and coaches, you know, a couple of our athletes could be your coaches. We really appreciate being a part of this community. It's one of the things that's really important to us, you know, we spend a lot of time volunteering for different things with Vikings organization. They've worked at Antioch Travel and Closet, they've been, cleaned up the senior center this summer, they've done a lot of community things because ultimately in the end. This community always comes back and gives to us in so many different ways, whether it's just the support, the kind words, the encouragement. Finding space for us when we, when we need space, when we need to get something done. Our community, our parents, our administrators and our district come through for us every single time. And we really appreciate the opportunity to be a part of this community. It's one of the things that Antioch is extremely well known for and one of the reasons why. You hear a lot about that Antioch cheerleading, whether it's Vikings or the high school. Because we have great community support members from our administration all the way through to our community members in general support. So thank you for your guys' support for recognizing us, thank you to our community who is always there for us as well.
Easter parade, the kids would love to see the cheerleaders of the trophy, so keep that in mind, alright? We're taking them, we're taking line up whenever, if you're interested, so a couple of things also they'd like to add and. We have a couple of days coming up, we have three weeks between now and the next board meeting, so it's one of those three week breaks, but a couple of acknowledgements. Yesterday was World Down Syndrome Day, yesterday. There's also the start of Ramadan today, we have Greek Independence Day on March 25th. March 29th is Vietnam Veterans Day, I believe, 50th anniversary as well. The Passover is April 5th through 13th and then Easter is April 9th. One last thing, I'd like to give an update on the Veterans Memorial, we met with the committee again yesterday. It was another very fruitful meeting, this time we went and walked over to the area near the Bill Brooks Wetlands. And came to an agreement on the site, the site is not exactly what was proposed last time, it's actually closer, the park area. Lake County contractor groups have been very. Promising and generous in their potential donations, so get the soil borings done, which also may be a donation by a company, so. We're moving forward and we're gonna meet again in about a month after we. So that's all I have, any citizens wishing to address the board, I don't believe there's anybody signed up. One, is there one? And cheerleaders, you don't have to sit through this, so you can all go. So we have. Lori, the clerk, will read the parameters for citizens wishing to address the board and then.
The opportunity to speak to the board is provided for members of the public who have comment to make about the business of the board. The board appreciates hearing from stakeholders and values your thoughts and questions. The board strives to make the best decisions for the village and public input is very helpful. The board must protect the stability and decorum of this meeting. Please be respectful for the duties of the board and democratic process in your comments tonight. Please state your name and address your comments to the board. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Please be factual and courteous. The board requests that you not make any statements that are personally disrespectful or condescending to members of the board or staff. To the extent multiple speakers are addressing a single issue, the mayor reserves the right to limit the number of speakers making public comment of repetitive nature and/or limit the amount of time for public comment. The board does not respond to comments or attempt to answer questions during the public comment period. The first speaker we have is Jackson Pollard.
Yes, thank you, clerk members of the board. My name is Jackson Pollard, I'm a community lawyer at Citizen Advocacy Center. We're a legal nonprofit based in Alhers. Which has been encouraging, facilitating civic advocacy, civic engagement in DuPage County, Cook County and of course, Lake County. I'm here to speak very briefly about the code of conduct the U, the village or the village board adopted, I believe unanimously, excuse me, a little over two years ago, resolution 2016. I submit that this code is important to the community that you represent, otherwise you wouldn't pass it. It has meaning, you adopted it for a reason. I offer that as the village board, you went so far as to adopt the code of conduct, you have a process in place to, to mine it and act if and when you determine that it has been violated. I want to very briefly read a few provisions from that code of conduct. First, behavior and conduct by public officials during meetings as well as outside of meetings may be subject to sanctions set out within this code of behavior and conduct. This text recognizes an important function of your role as public officials. There's a certain level of decorum that is expected as a public official and you are accountable to this body when you're speaking in your capacity as a public official, which can be true both inside and outside of this room. The second section I want to read, public official shall refrain from abusive conduct, personal charges or verbal attacks. Direct or infer the tax or imply the tax on the character or motive of other public officials, village staff or the public. I believe that is section C of this code of conduct. And use of the code is to evaluate conduct is crucial to letting you public officials know where the line is between healthy civic debate and something else and what accountability would be for crossing it. Otherwise, the code will be meaningless. Does this board intend to make evaluations under the code of conduct? I want to address just one very brief example. As can be seen from the posted reporting during the trustee report portion of January 25th, 2023 board meeting. From the dais, a statement was made accusing members of the District 34 School Board of Abuse. Now, under the code, it's not me to say whether this is a violation of the code of conduct or not, that is for you all. Is it a violation of the code of conduct? Are there similar statements made since the passage of the code of conduct that likewise deserve evaluations? By this board to determine potential violations or any alternative to educate the community about what is not a conduct violation and why. Your community and those of you sitting on the dais deserve to know if a board has passed the code of conduct that it intends to use and if not, why. Section K of the code of conduct provides village officials have a right to use to their own personal opinions and to have those opinions respected. And the First Amendment certainly protects the public officials from having to speak their own opinion. But that speech may not court with the code of conduct as passed by this board, which does not permit statements that could be interpreted as an attack on the personal opinions of other elected officials or even more members of the general public. When you're speaking as a public official, that role comes first above all others. And to repeat, you don't necessarily need to be in this boardroom to be acting in your capacity as a public official. Anytime you're carrying the weight of the government behind you, the code of conduct, which is narrower. I'll wrap it. The, the, the point I want to make here is that there should be a method for determining whether violations have been made and holding members accountable if necessary, and I would encourage you to develop.
Thank you. Alright. Then next item is the consent agenda, we have two items on the consent agenda. With any motion to remove either of those items. Otherwise. Second trustee Pearson, roll call please.
Pierce.
Aye.
Yes.
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 Five voting yes, motion carries, next item on the agenda is. Regular business consideration and approval of payments of accounts payable as prepared by staff in the amount of $306,087.81 to have a motion in the seconds. So moved, motion trustee Pierce, second trustee Peterson, any discussion? Roll call.
Pierce.
Aye.
Mason.
Yes.
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 Five voting yes, motion carries, next item on the agenda is consideration and approval of a resolution. Approving a $20,000 commitment to the Antioch Township for an outdoor fitness center at Two Husbands Sports Complex. As part of the 2023 National Fitness Campaign, Resolution Number 23-09. Do I have a motion?
Table this and ask the township that. Ask them for money for our flat cameras. They always had come to the board asking us for money, we had no representative, I said Mr. Spouse. And they're always asking us for money, this is gonna help protect them as well as the citizens of Antioch.
Right, so there's a motion to table. Motion to tables, right, do I have a second? Do you have a motion, motion to table, do I have a second?
Second.
Second trustee, alright, discussion. Can we just get a, even though we're tabling, can we get a description of why it came back? We have park director Quilty here, can we give a?
Thank you, it was brought to the park board, they had decided, being that you guys had decided not to, for it to come off the general fund, had to come off the park fund. And the park commission decided they did not want that amount of money coming out, they would rather improve tennis courts and/or other equipment. So it was, they had declined it and at the, at that time in our meeting, Mr. Shaughnessy did not have any other sponsors for. The extra $64,000.
Discussion?
Yeah, that's my turn to do, so the reason they asked this, and the park, and the money coming out of the park fund. If you go to this sawmill and you look at that dilapidated fence that's falling apart next to the sawmill. Park fund could use money to fix that fence, it's falling apart.
Insurance, it was replaced last year.
You got the parking lot to the sawmill.
Yeah.
That goes to, that, that it bugs up against, some of it's the sawmill, some of it, I don't.
Trade it.
Trade it, no, I'm funny.
I believe that fence was all replaced last year.
I'm telling you, it was just three, two days ago, split rail fence was replaced, I don't know if there's more fence. It's all, it's all rail fence, it's all, I'm telling you, it's all rusted, two days.
Or the metal fence.
The metal fence is all dilapidated, it's downed, it looks like garbage. So we're gonna spend 20 grand, and this is my argument, we don't spend money to fix what we have. And that's where we get pictures for weddings. And that's just, I mean, it's dilapidated, it's falling apart, it's rusty.
That is why the commission had decided not to donate that money to the township, well, for the fitness.
My point is, I would like to ask township that. We, we're, we're doing flat cameras to protect the citizens for safety, I want to ask Mr. Shaughnessy and the board over there, if they want to contribute. So it would be a washout on the money spent. That's why I want to table it, it's gonna benefit the township. It's gonna benefit the people of the village, because they're all taking it for the state, for the safety.
Yeah, let's, hey. Anything, any comment?
I. The only thing I was gonna say tonight is that I would rather spend the $20,000 on our parks, Centennial. Doc Johnson, you know, it's all, all of them need a lot of work, so we really in it for safety. You know, so I think we need to spend that money on our parks.
Trustee, Luther.
Bating a, a motion to table. I would argue against that, it sounds like we have a uniform consensus to know, to not pursue this commitment. So I would suggest that we vote no to table and let me go to a vote on this issue. That was rules game.
Hi trustee, everyone, sorry for being late, commercial trains are very long. Part of the same, uh, trustee Mason, with your motion to table, to table indefinitely, which would have the.
No, that, that definitely, okay, that definitely, you know. If we're gonna, i- i- it's just a point that I wanted to make is, one, we take care of our parks.
Sure, of course.
So if, if, if we got a motion that we're gonna, we're gonna can this thing, I'll change, I'll gladly change that motion. If we get a consensus to the board, because I don't want to spend money for something else. When we're spending money for safety and, and, and my point is, we're spending money for flat cameras, that's gonna benefit the whole. And it's just not gonna benefit the village, it's gonna benefit the whole township. So this is kind of, when the township asks us for money and we don't ask them for money, it's kind of embarrassing. So I guess to that point, your motion to table wasn't to table indefinitely, which I think is, they have the essence of terminating this matter and not bringing. And I would change my motion, the consensus on this board today is to not go forward with this money. Only, only with consensus of the board is to say no, it is.
I think we can do that.
We go, we can, does, there are two different ways to amend a motion, does anyone have an objection to the trustee amending his motion at this point in time? Mr. Mason, I believe you have a consensus then.
Okay, then I'll amend my motion, just to change my motion to ban the spend this money in a ridiculous manner.
I don't know if that's a grant.
Do we have a motion to deny the resolution, do I have a second?
I, I'm voting this down like.
I think we have a motion to deny.
Spending on our parks.
Deny the resolution, do I have a second? We have a motion to deny the resolution.
Right.
And then we have will you a second, any more discussion about that, the way we just spoke.
It seems very odd that they were doing this, but wouldn't we just have the motion to discuss this and then follow it up or down on that motion?
No, no, Robert's rules, since he made the motion with second, then it has to be followed through one way or the other. The same purpose, a motion table definitely has the same purpose of defeating a moment. So that's why I asked him for his interpretation.
Yeah.
Hold me a second, right?
Well, there was.
Already. Okay, okay, alright, go ahead Brett.
I was, I was gonna say, on this issue, we, we requested from the park's board to come back and make a recommendation to us, which they did. But, and, and so my belief is, is they don't believe we should spend this $20,000, we could use it internally better, that we honor their request, so. I would be against this at this time, but in favor of your.
Yeah, that's all the money I'm saying.
Trustee Bourbon?
I was gonna say, I still, at the last meeting, I said I was a firm now, I'm still a firm now, so.
Well, there, tabling indefinitely is denying.
I didn't get a really good chance to discuss because it flipped by me real quick. Just unusual, I just want to say, I agree with majority of the board here. That we have a lot of parks that need taking care of, we have a lot of issues in our parks and. We get a lot of complaints also that we don't back up and support our park board. And this case, they, they've given us what their decision is and we should take that, to let them know we do support it in most cases. Alright, roll call please.
Pierce.
Aye.
Mason.
Yes.
Davisson?
Yes.
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 Five voting yes, motion carries. Next item, item number three is consideration and approval of a resolution authorizing the administrator to execute an agreement with imperial surveillance. The amount of $31,145 for replacement access control system at the police department, resolution number 23-12. Amy's here to present the decision, so move. Section trustee Blue Tharp, second trustee Peterson, thank you. Alright, floor is yours.
Thank you, I, I have before each night a resolution. Authorizing the administrative to purchase access control systems, it would be for the police department, replacing their existing system. And adding on to it to allow the ability to secure their parking lot. The technology would enable us to use Bluetooth so that there would not be the need for a card swipe at that gate location. Because we cannot put a pedestal there, so we're dealing with a couple of location issues that wouldn't be normal. So our current system would not support that. So that's what we're looking to do.
Questions, comments, trustee Pierce, first of all, I'm gonna, so we can continue the discussion, make the motion to. Execution. Never heard it. Alright, well, I think it's. Part of the issue we're running into is the system's 20 years old, if I understand correctly.
Correct, over 20 years.
It's not expandable, it's not, parts aren't replaceable.
Right, it's a complex system that was, she, when that building was. 1998, that's when it was installed, so all of this new technology that is available now, we cannot outfit our current system with it.
And the current technology is just open doors and gates.
Well, it's the RFID and also Bluetooth. The current one is RFID. Yes, they do have the cards, but it's on premise, there is no remote, remoting into it, so if there's an issue on a weekend. Unless somebody is there, we can't even troubleshoot it, so let's say there is a stolen wallet or access badge, we can't even disable it, so. There's. Lots of issues with it. And the logging, there's no really in-depth logging, you can't go and look and see who's been in and out of the building with the cards.
Trustee Mason?
So, just so everybody understands, since you're disabling a phone, you're disabling the keypad instantly, that's lost.
Correct.
The old system doesn't allow that.
Right, so with, with the Bluetooth ability, individuals are authorized, individuals are allowed to have an app on their phone. That does a handshake with the reader to allow them to access the building. If the, if the phone is reported stolen, you can instantly go out there and disable that, so. There's, it would be the same as losing the key card, but we can remote into it to actually.
It's instant, yeah, this. This is, I think I could probably. If they didn't upgrade, because they probably can't disable my keypad.
Trustee Peterson?
I don't have anything yet.
Trustee Blue there? Trustee Bourbon? Alright. Alright, thank you, Amy, roll call please.
Aye. Yes.
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 Five voting yes, motion carries, next item on the agenda is consideration and approval of a resolution authorizing the purchase of three police patrol vehicles, resolution 23-13, Chief Dutchell.
So ironically enough, as you know, at the last board meeting, I came for you to talk about the struggles that we've been having with sourcing squad cars, just like every other department in the nation dearly. So through, through some inventive techniques and some good relationships and contacts, one of our staff members. Earlier this week, we learned that Marl Brothers Ford, which is located about an hour and a half south of Springfield. Traditionally earns the state bid award. For squad vehicles. Had their order fulfilled unexpectedly by Ford. They traditionally were ordered en masse to the tune of several hundred squad cars at a time and. Without notice from Ford, about five days ago, they started showing up on their lots for delivery. So we went into kind of hustle mode. Got some bids and some surprising, got it together and we're seeking to purchase three squad cars so that we're able to fill our orders that were budgeted this current fiscal year. As you know, we, we had some struggles last year, that in COVID as well, sourcing squad cars. So three is just to get back on track to keep us from falling too far behind. Total cost for the request is $187,065.42, that includes purchase, extended warranty, rust proofing, upfitting and.
Alright, discussion, trustee Pierce. I'll save my time to people next week, because I think it's a good idea to do this, maybe. Trustee Mason?
You gotta get them when you can. The only concept I was, the. The, it's commands over right, the radios. The uh, it's commands over right, the radios.
That's included with this price, we're transferring, I mean, this is for a whole price for fully, three fully equipped squad cars, right?
And then, um, trustee Peterson, do you have any questions?
No, that's fine.
Alright, trustee Luther?
Um, just one question, we had discussed possibly looking at additional purchases. Is, is that being looked into or?
I, I had a brief discussion with the administrator this morning, um, I think he's, he's awaiting some feedback from the board this evening. To see if that's something that they're interested in pursuing, but we did follow, but Marl, while they can't guarantee an additional three cars above the yacht. Will be placed or, or they, they've let us to believe that they have, um, a, a number of cars coming out over the next six weeks. They, they do believe that they would be able to fulfill the orders, however, until they're able to commit to an issue of appeal, they're not able to say for sure.
And the, the budget for next year, you're gonna be asking for an additional three?
That's, that's the budget request, uh, the minister does not get approved that capital allocation into the budget, but that is.
Obviously, we need to jump on these, y'all in favor of this, looking at getting those additional vehicles if we can at this time, just so far behind.
I say two, let's do the three and then um.
What do you have as a motion? Can I suggest that we amend the motion to approve the three and uh, one, six based on. Availability, said, only if we. Don't put three in the next group, I did. We put two, so we're.
So during the budgeting process, we presented the administrator with three different plans, kind of was the status quo plan. Uh, of the, of the best scenario plan and then, um, kind of a happy medium, out of respect for the, the capital that's available. Eight was the, we call it the luxury plan, the best case scenario. Three was the worst case scenario, so the happy medium is, is six, that will keep us operational and allow us to. Get back to where we would have been pre-COVID and without these.
Cause I'm, I'm willing to go with six, if that's what we can get now, we can get two more and bring them up to their. Pre-COVID needs or their needs now, to maintain us, I think we should.
Part, part of the challenge is that trustee Pierce is that, you know, when, when we budget and we plan for some of these vehicles, it's anticipation that we usually purchase, place our order in the summer. And they arrive sometime in the fall to early winter, right, so we're forecasting at the amount of mileage that would be placing on some of these vehicles. My fear is if we order eight immediately, um, we're gonna be in the position, we're, we're replacing cars a little bit prematurely. Uh, versus having another eight to ten months worth of mileage placed on them, so typically try to rotate them out. You know, we'll call it a hundred thousand mile range, and some of those cars currently have, you know, seventy to seventy-five, so I think. It may be a little premature if we order, I think, like, you want me to buy eight cars?
I'm not saying buy eight cars now, I'm saying you'll be, and buy six cars now, and then in the summer or the fall, buy two more. If you don't want to put the miles on it, you could always park them on one seventy-three on the up and down, like everybody else does.
Any other discussion on this? It's amended, yeah, it's amended. Prove the three up to six.
One more, add more comment, you just made a comment about the eight, but the mileage and everything else, but what are the odds of us? This last meeting, you talked about how we can't get things and these kind of came up.
Yes.
What are the odds of getting another vehicle come this fall? Are we gonna be bearing ourselves and wishing we would have bought these at that time?
You certainly could, um, you know, we've, we've been given assurances by Ford. That they were gonna begin production of the interceptors again for the twenty twenty-four model year sometime late spring. But we were given similar assurances by, by the manufacturers last year, they decided that they were gonna shut the line down for. Uh, to, to build a different model of vehicle, so it's, it's really trying to look into a crystal ball to compare to the manufacturers, you're like, you. The dealers don't know, the regional reps for the dealers don't know, so truly is one of those, they are here now. They'll just source additional six months from now.
So your recommendation, if we put this on you, considering six or you don't think it?
I think six would be comfortable, one, one option we always have is to, you know, as trustee Pierce had mentioned, we can budget for additional two in the fiscal year. Twenty-four budget that we're working on now, we don't need them.
Alright, um, so there's a motion on the table, it's second. Um, motion on the table to approve the three, again, up to six, uh, roll call please.
Yes.
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 Five voting yes, motion carries, thank you, um, no administrator reports tonight, any thing village clerk report? Um, any trustee reports other than those presented in writing?
Just one, just one. To recognize the officers. Shooter, one of the. And hillside, I think, uh, everybody should thank the, the safety of the officers, everybody came out. Okay, except for the, the uh, person that held up, held up the house unfortunately. Because all life, that everybody should be thankful that the officers came out okay. And the first responders, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, any other, trustee Bourbon, yeah?
Pay you back on that, um, uh, as well as thanking them for keeping residents safe, um, that. Was, that area was part of my subdivision, um, it was scary, um, but. Everybody, police officers, first responders, residents remained safe, so I really appreciate that.
Just, I forgot to mention this, who is it was, there's a robbery at the same time at the K B store. The same time that where, where the store clerk got shot with a P P gun. They're stable to handle that situation and other situations, so, I mean, they're all over the place, so.
Alright, thank you, um, alright, do I have a motion to adjourn the regular business?
So.
Second, I, motion trustee, roll call please.
I, yes.
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 I'm five voting yes, beings adjourned at seven oh seven, we'll take a five-minute recess. All meetings order at seven twelve, roll call please.
Present. Present.
Here.
Here.
Present, first item on the agenda is, we will have a March eighth, twenty twenty-three, committee of the hall meeting minutes as presented, do I have a motion in the second? Motion trustee Mason?
Second.
Second trustee Peterson, roll call please.
Cheers.
We need a three-week break.
I know we do. Yes, he said yes, I say yes.
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 Five voting yes, and it's approved, mayor report, there is none, um, onto the regular business, the first item on the agenda. Is discussion regarding the future downtown property at Main Depot, as you know, trustee. Administrator Kim is not here this evening, so I've been asked to just update, so. The news is, there's really nothing new at this time, uh, they've been going through the, uh, building design. Um, they've given us two options with the overhang, as is, and one, um, bid as a shorter version of that. Um, at this point, just to meet our deadlines, um, we're looking for board direction, if there's any objection to finalizing the bid documents. Um, because we need to give stormwater management ten days to review them, and if we want to have any chance of meeting this year by twenty's deadline, we have to get that rolling. So there will be additional presentations, but we'd like to get that bid packet out and published. Any objection by the board to do that? Yeah.
Is that knocking us into one of those options you just talked about?
They just give the general, it's up, yeah. Alright, um. Any other discussion on that item?
Um, I just have one thing, your honor. Sure, somebody sent me, they're out on the east coast and they, they ran across one of those, those pavilions. And they sent me a picture of it, and it actually is really pretty impressive. So, I'll send it to the.
Thank you, um, the next item on the committee of the hall is request for a class J BYOB license from. Antioch Academy of Art located at eight ninety-six Main Streets, um, I believe the, uh. Oh, I, the, uh, app, one of the applicants here, she said she couldn't wait to get up here and address the board. Um, no, just kidding, any discussion on this item, this is again, um, for art gal, art studio. Um, painting parties, uh, so they're looking for, um, similar to what we did a couple of weeks ago, so is there any? Discussion or objections moving that for a formal approval?
Who's reading the, the landlord?
Alright, so we will move this to the agenda for the next board meeting, which is the, uh, twelfth of April, okay? So like, it's easy. Now, my next item on the agenda is downtown beautification update, uh, Michael Gary, you can present that item.
Thank you, your honor, um, this matter comes for you this evening, uh, for a discussion. Um, as part of the continuing downtown initiative, cars of beautification projects. Um, we have been discussing the opportunity to try to beautify or try to create some creative, creative design aspects. To some of the festival spaces, you know, one of the things we've been trying to do is promote. For more, uh, festivals, or specifically the food truck event and our farmer's market. We've had some discussions about the farmer's market, but we thought this year, based on our discussions. Uh, with the, uh, committee, which again is all made up of staff, volunteers, business owners, several business owners in our downtown. We thought there would be an opportunity to, uh, do some creative things at Top Street, as you well know, there is a long-term beautification plan. Uh, which was compared, completed by the Colorado for Paul Street, which had a significant, um. Significant cost aspect to it, in over six million dollars, and there's a whole funding source for that. We thought there were some interim, small improvements we could do to create a creative festival space. One of the creative, creative ideas that came up was painting the street, as you see throughout the United States, there's more and more. Creative ways to create, um, interesting spaces by simply using asphalt paint and try and create some interest. So as you'll see, uh, in my staff report, uh, in, on the power point, uh, you see, uh, one. Uh, proposal, which was completed by a downtown business owner, um. With regards to painting some, uh, using the village's logo colors that were, were adopted last year by all together. Awesome creative, uh, artwork, um, and what we're proposing to do specifically is to have a community event, roll that community event. Sometime in May, specifically this, hopefully, uh, subject to whether approval, uh, so whether being cooperating, uh, the Saturday. After Mother's Day, to promote this event, have the community, uh, actually come out and paint top street as a community event. That will kick off our, uh, food truck events, which I believe start sometime in the end of May. Um, I've broken down the cost, we are looking at a cost approximately, actually the actual hard cost, uh, with generosity. Business would be approximately that, uh, two hundred ninety-eight dollars, less than two hundred dollars, so we could complete, uh, this, this painting endeavor. For less than two hundred dollars, in addition to that, uh, we are proposing to use three parking spaces, diagonal parking spaces. Or, uh, some temporary, um, um, eating areas part of the festival, as you well know, top street is closed off. So there will be no conflict with vehicular traffic, but as part of the, uh, food tr- uh, food truck event. We would create, we call it three parklets, uh, parklets is a design aspect where you, you can create temporary space. Temporary public space, temporary outdoor dining, by using parking spaces, it's something that's proliferating, again, throughout the United States. Not only in, uh, communities in the west coast and east coast, but, um, communities throughout Chicago, any area. So again, uh, the only actual aspect, we are proposing to, um, purchase some umbrellas to, um, provide some shade. For the existing picnic tables that we already have, um, and that's a proposal that we are proposing for. Uh, for using three diagonal parking spaces as part of the food truck event, uh, for some additional, um, outdoor dining opportunities. Uh, as we, we've already discussed crosswalk stenciling, we have a total cost of approximately forty-six hundred dollars for a crosswalk. To actually have a professional company come out and stencil them, we're actually in the process of investigating whether there's some opportunity to have some volunteers. Actually fabricate stenciling, so at this point, we're not proposing to expend that money yet. Uh, there may be some opportunities to simply have volunteers create some, um, stencils and actually have artistic volunteers. To stencil some of the crosswalks, as you well, we discussed, we, we talked about stencils, the crosswalks at Lake Street. Uh, with some forks and knives to kind of highlight the number of restaurants on Lake Street. And also down over near the band shelf to actually stencil some of those crosswalks, uh, with musical notes to kind of again. Highlight, um, that our festival space for summer concerts, it's a simple way of creating some visual interest on the extensive amount of asphalt. That is, um, contained throughout, uh, Skidmore Road area. Um, and then the last aspect, most importantly, is to try to promote this in the community. And get community engagement, to actually have volunteers do the work. Uh, and we think it's a nice way to kick off the summer event, so with that, I'll be more than happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Questions, comments over here?
I'm glad to see it getting started, I'm a little disappointed in the cost of the crosswalks and I, I know there's a lot of other downtown beautification things that have been. Um, suggested over the last two or three years and people have been waiting patiently for them to occur. So if we can get this going and figure out the crosswalks, I can't see how, as a community, we can't do crosswalks.
Right, I think.
I know they have some requirements in direct air traffic, but forty-six hundred dollars. So crosswalks are crosswalk, I, I'll go out and buy, uh, five hundred dollars with a couple guys.
Right, so we're talking about actually having fabricating locally, some local stencils. And then using volunteer assist, use asphalt paint on those stencils, so we're working with the, there's some talented, uh, people in the art league and. Uh, our local art businesses, so we're working with them right now, okay? Please keep this survey, because we need to get started.
Thank you, trustee Mason, trustee Peter.
I got, the, the only thing is, I remember reading and I don't know, I can't find it, is we used to put. Some of the painting, when you put it on the street, it gives false signals to some of the cars that they break for no reason. I can't find the article again.
Yeah, I think there, there are some, you know, there are actual standards on your arterials, so obviously on your, we were never. Supposed to do this on any of our major busy streets, i.e. the I-Dog, uh, right of ways or what we call our collector streets. Uh, we have identified two street, generally because we think it's generally a low, generally a low traffic area, traffic count. Um, so we're, I think there's generally comfort about that, um, and then obviously with regards to crosswalks, we are generally. Consistent with the actual standards, we're, uh, maintaining the crosswalk, um, the, the cross areas. So nothing there is being changed, all we're doing is proposing to incorporate stencils within those checked cross areas. Um, again, this has been done in numerous communities of the United States, so we're generally comfortable, just based on the amount of traffic that this. Will not cause any vehicular, um, conflict or, um, anything like that, so.
Maybe it's just me, I thought.
No, you're act, there are, there are some studies up there. That's why I doubt it, no.
Yeah, I just, I, on the automatic braking systems, I just, I saw it, I go, interest, I saw an interest, I didn't keep it.
No, but you're correct, there are some, um, staff, there's some basically articles and, uh, areas of all that which may identify potential vehicular conflict. But based on our discussions, we're comfortable that this would not cause any vehicular conflict, either on Lake Street or Top Street.
Trustee Peterson?
I really, this looks great, Michael, and I'm looking forward to doing it, um, how are we gonna get the volunteers to do this?
So again, plan, again, we wanted to get the board's input, we're hoping to start promoting this within the next, uh, actually few weeks. Start promoting it, I think Jim Moran being creative, working with our beautification committee. Whether it's like top, paint top street or toss, you know, come help us paint top street, some type of creative, um, marketing campaign. Get volunteers, we may, you know, contact some of the local churches, have also been very active in volunteering. To try to promote getting a maximum number of people out to do this, we think we can accomplish a lot of this in one day, one Saturday.
Great, okay, thank you, that's all I have here.
Trustee Luther?
I think those cheerleaders would be really good.
Trustee Bourbon?
Uh, no question.
Alright, thank you, so seems like we will, keep moving this along, thank you. Uh, next item on the agenda is, uh, budget overview, uh, Zeta's here, if there are questions or comments and. Uh, next item on the agenda is uh budget overview, uh, Zade is here, if there are questions or comments, and the last time. It was late and we went. Budget, I wish I had a copy of that. Um, I believe the timeline, obviously, we have other. Meeting or two to approve it, so hopefully just. Get through it and ask. Any questions or concerns that they have on that. Budgets, so yours.
Thank you, uh-huh, and members of the board, so tonight the item is on the agenda. With the intention for me to entertain any questions, I just want to do a little re- little bit of recap. We had the very quickly presentation a couple of weeks ago, and then I did a follow-up email. On March fourteen, where I provided to the entire budget, I provided to the capital plan. I went through the two major funds, which is general fund and the water sewer fund where I highlighted. And I gave some caution to things that are concerned as a finance director. So I listed those things to make it easier for you to go through the budget. Review the information that I'm giving you and allow you to think about it and. Meet with me or call me and Jim and we can discuss, so tonight we don't have a presentation. But our clerk has some, put the presentation of the packet as a refresh to everyone, oh, okay. Didn't want the packet, but I did email it to all of you, um, so if you have any questions tonight, it's just for. Me to entertain any questions you may have, or maybe um to think about in the next coming weeks, if um you want to sit down with Jim and I and have any discussion. Regarding the capital plan, it is a work in progress, um, Jim is working on it. And he will present a capital plan for you for twenty-four and the next five years. That's all I have tonight, unless you have something to add.
Questions? There's a page question at page forty-two.
Page forty-two? Oh, he said he has fifty, I said we'll be here till midnight.
Thanks, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, um. Alright, uh, other business, there was one thing I wanted to bring up. Um, okay. Um, we did have, um, our congressman here, we, as you know, he came in and, um, they are open for federal grants right now. Uh, administrator Kime. Um, immediately put in a requested grant for our public first facility at ten million dollars. Did get an interview with uh. The rep's office, and we should know pretty soon if. It, it might not be ten million dollars, but we're gonna be included in the items that will be presented in Washington for part of the grant program, so. We will keep you informed as that goes along. Um. If he doesn't get that, we're gonna. Any other, any other business is not to have any requests for executive session. I believe Michael um. Has requested, so we have a, a request to go into executive session, session about potential litigation. Um, so I need a motion and a second to go into executive session for potential litigation, but no further business to take place after executive session. Motion trustee Blue Tharp, second trustee Peterson, roll call please.
Yes.
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 Five voting yes, motion carries. Thank you, Amy.